Discussing the assets, so. And it lays out your assets in there if you read it in there, it lays out what the guidelines are to include this part of that.
Well, that's her.
That's coming from the state.
She is the one that can do the audit, and you have to go through audits to accept it apart, remember that, so. A local. Assess limits vary, a common example is combined asset value, chemixine twenty thousand, liquid CAD, not exceeding seventy four hundred. The bank has invested in secondary properties and such land in secondary vehicles.
Oh, yeah, on the first page. Eight, on the ninth line. We audited annually to verify eligibility, so it does say that.
I remember seeing all, but doesn't, it doesn't stay on there, I mean, really, every place it says, you must be.
So, according to this.
Your primary residence must be owned by you or must be occupied by you, but how is it not considered an asset?
Says local guidelines include an asset test, but the value of your primary residence is not included. The combined assets of everyone in your household must not exceed the limit set by your local assessing unit. So, it doesn't include the value of the home as the asset, because that's the asset you're asking to be exempt from paying tax on.
So, you must, alright, you must also need the assessed acumen set by your local addressing or assessing unit. Excluding the value of your primary resi- okay, so the home itself is excluded. Well, one member. If this is the state's guideline, it's fifteen dollars, sixteen dollars. They vary, but cannot be lower than federal guidelines. This is the federal guideline.
Federal guideline would be the federal poverty guidelines.
Does anybody know what federal one is?
Hold on. It is. For a single individual, it's fifteen thousand six hundred fifty, for a family of two, it's twenty one, one fifty. Family of three is twenty six, six fifty, family of four is thirty two thousand, one fifty.
That don't even make sense.
And a family of five, that's, that's like their income, that's their income, if you make more than that, you're not under poverty. So, like your federal. Yeah, it's not considered an asset, that's just how much, say, if a person is on.
You said, everything you just said, Michigan is lower than federal, just in below. State is lower. Like a hundred bucks. That's income, yes. So, that's income, maybe it's not the same. It's an income as well. Technically, when you're with income, Michigan is lower than federal. Maybe they don't have one. Well, I could tell from the conversation that they were requesting this for base. This is an income base. Yeah, but, hey, we just throw a number at, and they said twenty. Let me at least triple what we had before and just say ten. Do you ever know a reason why she was up three? And I think if somebody can't have ten thousand dollars in stuff, I'm okay giving them some help.
Sounds like federal money for individuals, you're still at fifteen thousand six hundred.
Yeah, I'd say like income or your income or health.
This is federal poverty level taxing.
That's, that's your income.
Their assets.
I know she said twenty, you're in for.
No, you gotta look at, like, now, say, you got retired people and stuff like that, but their social security, that would put them under a certain point of, of the poverty, because they get, they make so much less. And then, if they own enough assets, then they, you know, if they're under that ten thousand, then you're just opening everybody up, a lot of people to just asking for exemption. That's maybe why she had it set lower, you know, because if somebody's really struggling, if someone's really struggling, they're not gonna have ten thousand dollars worth of stuff. You know, if somebody's really truly struggling, they're barely gonna have that three thousand dollar card. You know, that's maybe why she had it set that low, that's the way I look at it, if a person is really truly struggling that much, are they gonna have ten thousand dollars worth of stuff? They're gonna be sitting there fighting each day for a meal, kinda thing. You know, in my, in my heart, you know, that's the way I feel about it.
Do we wanna wait until there's an old person that's at rock bottom before we go for help, or do we see somebody that's not selling everything before we do it? If I'm not, I'm just at twenty thousand, we're at three. There was some common ground where someone didn't have to be right, like I said, at rock bottom, selling everything down.
I understand.
Help somebody in the middle, don't help them at the bottom. That'd be my opinion, so. Snap pay you under forty five hundred for all. Asset rent prices.
The house does not, is not included, that's the top, that one. So, they have net less than twenty thousand dollars in assets.
Oh, here, federally, there are two grand annuals, three thousand here.
But, I wanna, okay, so their income, because here in Michigan, I've, I've done a little research on income, and that annual income here is not a lot, what they think is great, with thirty seven thousand, forty seven thousand dollars, is is not a lot of money. So, if you figure their income is thirty seven forty thousand in their taxes, so we're gonna, they have to at least be at twenty thousand dollars for prob- I think you're right. I think every, I think the twenty thousand will stay. Cause if that, it's, it's not rock bottom, but I mean, you can still have a nice truck and get to work, but still have a hard time. Then, if women are raising kids without a second income. You're bad, and like you said, that over.
Oh, what do you think?
Some states have eliminated polling or raised asset limits for SNAP while others have put stricter limitations.
So, we can, I, we can adjust this, so where we say twenty thousand, but you can't have X, Y, and Z? They've been asking us for a while, too.
So, that's why I couldn't be, I'm gonna grab this other, did anybody wanna water anything?
Hey, Mike.
What?
We're, we're kinda. We're looking at this back.
Yeah.
What's our goal? What, what do we want accomplished by talking about this?
We have to get it in, so.
Our goal is to find a number. But is our goal, is our goal to truly help people, or is our goal not to cause punishment? I, I don't know what our goal.
Well, we need to function, and we're already functioning the red, now that's another thing that I've learned to play, partly, college hasn't been positive in nineteen years. So, that's where we're carrying a lot of stuff.
So, we wanna help the college, but at the same time, we wanna help our college.
Taxation, I mean, I don't think we're going twenty or fifteen, but I mean, I think a guy could bump into his twofold.
Three thousand dollars, I argue that it's, in my mind, it's, it's not correct. Three thousand dollars is how, your car runs, someone will assess it. So, I, I believe you gotta, you gotta call someone in the middle, twenty maybe high?
Well, let's say this, for SNAP, anybody knows what SNAP is? That is supplemental material assistance program, just to be in that. That's three grand. Um, for those of elder disabled, remember fifty, fifty, forty five hundred. Um, SSI, what's SSI?
Social Security Supplemental Income.
SSI?
Yo, supplemental.
Okay, on the other hand, it had remained frozen since nineteen eighty nine at two grand. For individuals in three thousand, unmarried couples, so that hasn't moved in thirty seven years.
So, that would actually be really interesting, and that could be a little bit better working with. Everybody where it goes one hundred percent to twenty five percent.
Very enough income. Are you massive or whatever?
Yes, it is.
Well, we've been on it long enough. I don't think we need to be crazy crazy here, but I mean, I think we should go off a little bit to help somebody that's tired. I mean, if they're even at a disabled or elderly person is forty five hundred. I think one to five thousand would help somebody that's tired. Not implement a lot of exclusion, but would help somebody. That's what I would recommend, five grand. And that's even more than SNAP, that's more than SSI. Well, double those six, if I wasn't breaking. Here is a double of six, I say six. What did my else think?
I don't hear you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Take motion two.
Yes, that's why we're asking everybody. Well, we, I think.
That would be, that would be the auditor's guidelines. That they would have to follow from that, I don't think we can put what you can't get home, that would be done through the auditor. There is very strict guidelines that you can come audit with. We just have to put the dollar amount on it. I would think that'd give you a thousand bucks for yourself and five thousand dollars for. Can't do that, and we're offering help, so. Need a motion to make a six. Four hundred, what am I hearing? What, double, what, Marty?
Six thousand either.
I have a two, are you gonna slip over?
I, I have a.
Order to discuss sealed bids for lawnmower. Um, opening a loan is two hundred bucks, just to end on page twenty. So, we updated one of our lawnmowers. In the process of trade in, we're gonna trade it in, but they were kinda like, whatever, in the logs, you've got a few people. Make verbal offers on it, so we're gonna put it out there and sell. That is.
And there's a, there's a envelope with your newspaper that describes what it needs, what it is. And it's sitting out back, so you can go out back and look at it.
Guide, move, it just needs some love, and it's got some hours on it. Zero, okay. Yes. Um, no.
No, it does not run right now, there's no battery.
Well, yeah, it's getting some stuff. But you can throw a battery on it, it'll fire.
Jumper cables.
It's not a deer, remember that. So, need a motion to make that up for sale. Here. Over eight. What, double Marty? Right. Order to discuss fees fines, penalty for building without proper zoning permits. Zoning permission fee is set at a hundred dollars. Local business admin, zoning admin, local union project staff, etc.
Second person that we are been working with has had you out several times. So, he should be, he gets seventy five dollars to tell she can twenty five dollars for. Mac is gone several times, he's established me for a hundred dollars, so he gets seventy five dollars, we're going out there five times. The gentleman, the, I don't know if I'm able to pick names, but he is, um, proceeded to build without permits, he proceeded to build without even getting a zone- zoning permit, and then on top of this. Um.
Nor to show law, red tag.
Yes.
Eagle, red tagging.
Yes.
For the, for the RV. Uh, uh, for the building, no, for the RV.
So, you can't move forward with that, right?
The way I understand it, though, this is him talking, right, so I, is that you can operate hand down with five or less spaces without an eagle. He's got, what, twenty, I don't even know, he's built behind, and he claims that he's only got five of them open, because he doesn't have a permit to do the rest. I don't know if that's true or not, I'm just telling you what he told me. So, now eagle has made informal and red tagged him for the rest. But the way I understand it, you may, I did actually talk to George down at who, because he ran through this one, five years ago, he had his faces. And he confirmed that you can have five without a permit, after five, then they consider you a campground, and you have that permit from that, so he did all the rest. He got red tagged.
So, we have a letter here from Eagle. Date of July thirty first. We make both letters on the last page, you are hereby ordered to immediately cease and desist any and all campground operations. My name is the, um, not sure, I can't figure it out, but, um, not only that, but so the they've ordered him several times, and he has failed by. What, what brought a lot of this on was that when he finally came in and got a permit, zoning permit. Mac already realized that there were so much building, uh, and damn, the building inspector was like where's your permits, where's this, where's that, so he's gonna hold the permit that, but now we have two. No, we have one special meeting, because the gentleman happened to catch the planning commission meeting at any time and put it on to their agenda. But one of the board members was very irritated with the fact that everybody said, yes, go ahead, give it to him, because we didn't have X, Y, and Z together, um, we really wanted to promote business, which we do, but there has to be some kind of law order. So, now this is a working opportunity to bring this in place, like, what is gonna be our penalties, our fines, our fees?
We can go through the numbers later, but now, if this, yes, we'll move forward with that. So, it said here to discuss, yes, regarding fees and fines, no.
Yeah, but I said, oh.
We'll get a table later, we'll look and see what other people are.
Well, I'll just tell you, our attorney fee was three hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, and that's the thing, I don't disagree with, but that's also, you heard me saying it, so be it.
It's something we can bring up, um, at the Wednesday meeting this week to.
Well, I got a few things I wanna do, but I mean, it's on our next, it's on our next one, in order to discuss fees and special use at. Hey, they had a special meeting. I mean, all of this stuff, I'll be honest with you, looking at numbers, and, I mean, I'm a businessman, the stuff is bullshit, and I'll say that out loud. I mean, I'm sitting here, looking at this meeting, okay, that costs a hundred bucks, and every person that was sitting at the table gets forty dollars, you got a lawyer on Zoom. Why is it a hundred bucks? I mean, at what point do the taxpayers, and I said it, Patty got mad at me. And I, I mean, just, the zoning commission and the board, they just do what they do, and then expect us as a township to write the checks. And here I sit, and I look at this meeting, and I sat right there at a chair, I look at forty bucks, forty bucks, forty bucks, a lawyer with stopwatch, forty bucks, forty bucks, and a hundred dollar meeting. I said, at what point does everybody here get tired of losing money? I mean, a special use meeting, if you're gonna have a lawyer on, it needs to be, I, I said it, it needs to be cost times two. Well, how do you do that, okay, the lawyer's four hundred bucks, and everybody else here is four dollars, that needs to be a thousand dollar meeting. Where every one of us taxpayers literally just threw twenty bucks into a bin with this gentleman to break the law. And we're having to have a special meeting for it at a loss. The way this stuff is going on is asinine, in my opinion, it needs to stop, because the place isn't gonna be able to pay the lights in twenty years. I feel sorry for our grandkids if everybody keeps down this road. And that's what I'm going to tell everybody, I mean, these special meetings need to be cost times two. I mean, and even these permitting fees, you need to come in and you need a variance, I mean, that variance meeting should be five hundred bucks, just to have. I mean, then expect people not only say it, but to come from a different city and only give them forty bucks, too, is getting a point that's ridiculous. I mean, these fees need to be addressed, and I'm going to do that. And if everybody don't like it, I don't know what else to say to it, other than keep losing money then. Cause it's ridiculous.
I'll shut up, but I mean. I, I. To cause the county, county.
I've never seen a meeting sitting there from a gentleman that broke the law be so cheap, and every person that lives here paid for it.
I think, I think that this kind of township should cost any of this, that's done for a person asking for something, should be paid for.
And I will go to the quarterly zoning meeting, and I will tell them, here's the deal.
Well, she wears a letter.
Well, I understand her letter, but her letter, her comment to me was bogus, but, we write their checks, okay? And if you guys all wanna just sit and do what you wanna do, at some point, somebody needs to understand what this crap costs.
There was no reason to have that. Not.
Oh, basically, three hundred, three hundred dollars for a lawyer.
I'm not going to use a name, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Insisted that there was a second meeting. So, now, all I'm gonna say, Mike, is to penalize him, although he needs to be penalized, penalize the landlord. Because one person didn't like the way the first meeting went, is not right. At the, the second meeting shouldn't have called, like, who authorized the attorney? You write the check, why did they just get to call the attorney?
That's one thing that needs to be looked at. Someone, basically, too many people are just doing what they wanna do here.
You said.
Everybody has attorneys, don't know.
There was zero meeting, had, zero reason to have that attorney on that meeting, zero. His contribution was next, I don't know.
Yeah, you were there.
I, so I have to give the whole thing.
He talked to me more than he talked to anybody.
And only because you asked some questions, right?
Well, that's cause I didn't know, I mean, you got your licensed peace officer to issue a citation, how do I, how do I write somebody?
But if we didn't have that second meeting, he wouldn't have been on the phone, but it was all determined in the first meeting. Because one board member felt slighted, we had a second meeting. Right, now, does, does a special per, special use permit require a fee? Absolutely.
Yes.
And we need to determine what that fee should be, and I'm not against the whole, what it costs for the meeting, I'm true, not against that at all.
I think it's gotta be a thousand bucks.
But that second meeting might, it's wrong charge line, and I don't know what that means, and I'm not saying that we should just suck it up, I'm just saying, because one person wasn't happy. Don't need a second meeting, wasted my time, wasted all of their time, and wasted our time.
I'll tell you, Patty called me, told me we were gonna have a special meeting. Because of, of one person. So, I, I, I don't believe in that either, because we all be approved?
Yeah, it was already done, and I even asked her when she came back to me, is it gonna change the vote, she said, well, at the very worst, I'll go three to one instead of four to one, I said, why are we having him not in the meeting? There's no reason, so I, I'm sorry, you kind of went on about a can here, but that's part of what we're here for. You definitely need a special use permit fee, has to happen.
Well, even the variance board, appeals board that I put in, you guys need to fall in line with that.
If you come and ask the township for something, and I'm saying you will never negative, me, whomever, it should not cost the taxpayers, because I want something, it should cost me.
Right.
And we need to determine what that is, for too many years, this has been free.
All, all these.
It's cost all of us, right? So, we just need, but we need to put some thought into it, like, and figure out exactly what it is. But multiple things need to happen, variance, definitely, because you're asking for something special, and the se- the special use, it's right in our, our thing, it makes you try to be. Then, we have to go for, for the fines, but how punitive do we make the fine?
Fine, whatever. I don't think we need to put the numbers on today, but.
All those things need to be addressed.
Ask for number six. Okay, we're discussing fees fines, penalty for buildings without proper zoning permit. Permission fee is set a hundred bucks.
That's just the regular one, and all we have, we don't have a, a special permit, a variance, um.
Right, that's a standard goal, but they're trying to take dimensions off a lot.
Right.
I don't think that's agreed.
Right.
But I mean, I think a revisit, cause even, even, even a, an electrical inspector has a revisit fee of fifty bucks.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think we need to implement that.
Absolutely.
Revisit fee. Make that fifty percent of whatever the application. Can we split that with you, or how does this work?
Yeah. The initial fee? Yeah, the initial fee is the seventy five.
So, we just stick with that.
Yeah, whatever, I, I'm not even, I'm not even pushing that, because, but yes, fine. If I have to go somewhere close. We're doing more paperwork, the township should get members, the county should get me.
So, then how do we do that? Um, do we have a slip that with the revisit, do they come back in and invite more revisits?
We're gonna have to have a form, I'm gonna have to write it up, that it needs to be redone.
Just give it another line.
Just on the backside of it.
Whatever, just give it another line on the sheets, if he says, second, business, second, zero dollars.
And then I, I place you meet the right line.
That's all it is in a lot of the place.
That's fine.
So, various.
All you're asking there?
Yeah, so, well, I'm trying to.
Put multiple visits in fifty dollar review.
So, what, what if all that stuff in place are we now not giving, because, um, the board of planning permission um, did write us a letter, which it didn't return, I'm sorry. But it did say, um, as, as, at the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five special meeting, county township planning permission. It was voted to recommend the township board of trustees consider finding. It was voted to recommend the township board of trustees consider finding.